Okay, we're all here. I guess we can get started. Bill? Mr. Moffett?
I'll read the Statement of Compliance.
Yes, please.
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of this meeting has been published in the local newspapers on February 7 and February 8, 2015. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television channel 77 and Fios, channel 46. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of this public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Now, if you could please rise for salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Chair, cold roll.
Okay, yes, please.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Mr. Biancamano?
Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Cluffell?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Sobolov?
Here.
Ms. Stromwell?
Here.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Here.
Okay, so now we'll proceed to the recognition portion of the meeting. Dr. Hernandez?
Good evening, Madam President and fellow Board members. Before I start with the students, I would just like to recognize the principals at the buildings. This month, they are celebrating Black History Month, and they're doing many activities. And I just want to tell you about some of the activities that are going on in the buildings. This is just a sampling. There are more than this. At Brand School, they will be highlighting a prominent African American during the morning announcements. They will also have mini classroom lessons honoring African Americans. At Calabro School, last Friday morning during their morning meetings, they learned about the development and purpose of the celebration of African Americans in this country. At Connors, they are planning an assembly on Wednesday, February 25th. All Board members are invited. The assembly will celebrate the lives of African Americans. There's a lot of dancing and a lot of music. At the Wallace School, the first graders are researching African Americans, and they will make, each student will make a presentation to their classmates. At the Hoboken Junior High School, they will have the Second Annual Black Film Festival, and they will also have a Black History Month essay contest, which is sponsored by the HEA. There will be cash awards. So that's our Black History Month at the schools. For our Students of the Month, our first student is Vivian Allen from Brand School. Vivian is a star student. She is respectful of others, follows the classroom routine, completes her assignments with pride, and enjoys school. We know this because she always has a smile on her face. Please join me in congratulating Vivian. Our next student is from Calabro. She's, I know that she's not here. Her father did call, said that she's feeling ill, so we will recognize her at the next board meeting. Our next student is from Connors Elementary School, Sierra Velazquez, first grader. Sierra is a pleasure to have in class. She is a sweet and cooperative girl. She is a model for behavior. She excels in mathematics and social studies. Regardless of how busy she is, she still has the time to do something nice for someone in her class. For this reason, Sierra is one of the best-liked students in the class. I hope that her considerate manner and strong academic drive continue to have a positive influence on our class. Please join me in congratulating Sierra. Our next student is a third grader from Wallace, Samuel Tornabeni. Samuel is a very conscientious student, always prepared and ready to participate in class. He does his homework. He has a friendly and thoughtful attitude towards his fellow classmates. He is always willing to be helpful to anyone who needs his assistance. Samuel is a model student who other students can look up to. Please join me in congratulating Samuel. Our next student is an eighth grader from Hoboken Junior High School, Noah Mora. Noah is an intelligent, articulate, and helpful student. This year in particular, he has taken responsibility for and ownership of his academic career, honing his skills in class and working with students who need a little extra help and encouragement. Noah is a productive, helpful, and responsible student. Please join me in congratulating Noah. And last but not least, our high school, junior senior high school student, eighth grade, excuse me, 12th grader, Lianza Rodriguez. Lianza is a talented and motivated young woman who gives 100% in everything she undertakes. She is the president of the Hispanic Culture Club and a member of the bowling team, tennis team, and the National Honor Society. Lianza is ranked in the top five in her class and is the true definition of a red wing. Please join me in congratulating Lianza.
Thank you, and that concludes my recognitions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hernandez. Okay, now we need to go into a brief executive session for legal update and some review of some personnel items on the agenda. Mr. Moffett, do we read it in first? We read it first?
You read it first.
Can you please read us in, and then we'll motion in second?
Take a roll.
Yeah.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Can you read the resolution to go into executive session?
Thank you.
Whereas the Hoboken Board of Education seeks to adjourn to executive session in full compliance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting at which it is discussed matters pertaining to personnel negotiations and/or litigation, now be it resolved that the Hoboken Board of Education adjourns to executive session to discuss matters of a legal update and personnel matters. Be it further resolved that the minutes of this discussion of any of these items will be disclosed to the public when matters have been determined and confidential, excuse me, confidentiality is no longer required. Action may be taken by the Board. The estimated time for this executive session will be roughly?
About half an hour.
About a half an hour.
I think we should clarify that the legal issues specifically relating to pending litigation.
Pending litigation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Secretary.
Call roll?
Yes, please.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Ms. Cluffell?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Stromwell?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett, can you bring us out of closed session, please?
Sure, we have a motion to return and open. I move that we come out of executive session. All right, we had a motion from Mr. Cluffell, closing our executive session and returning to general open session. It was again motion by Mr. Cluffell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call roll. Ms. Angley?
Here.
Here in returning. Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Stromwell?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes. Okay, well now we'll move on to administration and committee reports. Dr. Burkhart?
Thank you. In January, as you know, I was out with the flu and missed the meeting, but I want to mention something that I would have on that evening for the public and for the television audience. The month of January is Board of Education Recognition Month in the state of New Jersey. And I wanted to mention that because I think that the members of our Board need a little recognition now and then and a little appreciation and thank you for the job that they do day in and day out for not only the students but the families of our city of Hoboken. They work tirelessly with no compensation, and as I've said before, I've been around quite a bit, and this Board is one of the best Boards I've ever worked with. So I want to extend my appreciation for them, for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Another item tonight, we're going to have a resolution allowing our, six of our youngsters and coaches to go to the Penn Relays in April 24th. It's not on the original agenda because we didn't get the information exactly on time, but we want to put it on as a live item tonight so that we can get the ball rolling with the fundraising, et cetera. So that's going to be read in later on when we do the approvals. Thirdly, we're going to be pulling Resolution 9.16 from the public agenda tonight, and that's the at-will contracts for the at-will employees or non-union employees, and we're going to be bringing that back in March, but it needs further review.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business administrators report?
Sure, I just have one item tonight. Just want to make everyone in attendance and who might be tuning in, make them aware that we have a request for bids out currently for the Joseph F. Brandt Primary School exterior masonry repairs. The bid documents are available at our architect. If you check our website, all the details will be there. I'll go over it real quick. We will have a non-mandatory pre-bid walkthrough on February 12th at about 10:00 a.m. at Brand School. They can call, make arrangements again with the architect. And the bid opening is now scheduled for Tuesday, March 3, 2015, and that'll be at 10:00 a.m. That concludes.
Thank you. And now, now we'll do committee reports. Mr. Biancamano, would you like to start with facilities?
Absolutely. The Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, February 4th from 7:00 p.m. to 8:20 p.m. in the Wallace Principal's Office Conference Room. In attendance were G. Marie Mitchell, Sharon Angley, myself, and Mr. Timothy Callagie. Items discussed, one was the Brand facade update, my favorite, favorite issue. Thank you, Mr. Moffett, for that report. The notice to go out, the bid was approved by the state. Obviously, Mr. Moffett just said the bids did go out, and they need to be returned in 10 business days. The bid would then need to be sent to the School Development Authority, which normally approves this quickly. Mr. Callagie hopes to start the actual construction of the facade in March, and it will be a two-to-three-month process when it begins. So finally, we are nearing the end of the scaffolding at Brand School, which is fantastic news. Number two, the second thing that was discussed was Wallace volunteers. Mr. Bailey has garnered volunteer support with NJ Cares. Throughout the past few months, volunteers have come in and painted 12 bathrooms halfway. The district will finish the job. Since this was going to be done completely by the district, it will save the district money now that it's half-done, the effort is underway to try to get the green color out of Wallace School. Number three, the third thing we spoke about was the Hoboken High School Room 126 steam line repairs. This is the culinary classroom at the Hoboken Junior Senior High School where there was a steam line issue. Although the classroom, the culinary classroom is actually two years old, the steam line is much older, and the problem is now fixed as it was completed in a few days. We had a discussion on the replacement of the high school football field. The athletic field is approaching its 10th year, which is about the most you can get out of it. It would cost about $900,000 to replace the field. The normal overall annual facilities budget is lower than what it would cost to replace the field, so we discussed possibly bonding for this as interest rates are so low, which we could budget over a few years. A recommendation that I believe a board member had was how some NFL teams like to donate turf to local high schools. The only problem with this is when we get the actual turf from the NFL team, the fields are already depreciated, but Mr. Callagie is going to be looking into this again, and we'll have more numbers to report at the next meeting. The final thing that was discussed was the transportation updates. We have heard from a few parents regarding our new transportation providers, and here's an update. Mr. Callagie feels the privatization plan is working. It's not perfect, but he feels it isn't any different than when we had in-house drivers. In terms of athletic runs, which is normally overtime costs, both the remaining in-house driver and the private companies do these routes, and the district looks for what's most cost-efficient on who to use. According to Mr. Callagie, there are still some issues that need to be fixed with transportation, and he is working to make sure those issues are resolved, but he sees no difference in the amount compared to when we had our in-house drivers. John, just a few notes, three quick notes. Mr. Callagie is looking into putting a Board of Education sign on this building since this is where our central offices are now located. The second thing was the lighting and sound equipment in the auditorium of Hoboken Junior Senior High School will cost $75,000 to be updated. We are hoping to start with the lighting, then work on the sound system depending on funding. And finally, the heat at these meetings was brought up, and as we all know, it can get quite hot in here, especially under the lights here. Mr. Callagie hopes to remove the radiators as a way to help. The problem is if the heat gets shut off completely, the rest of the building gets cold, but we do have an idea at tonight's meeting. We did open this door, and there's a window that's open behind this door, so we're getting some cross-ventilation, and it's working a little bit. So that's all for this month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sobolov?
Athletics and Performing Arts met on February 4th. In attendance was myself, Dr. Hernandez, G. Marie Mitchell, Jen Evans, and Monica Stromwell. And we had a really very quick meeting because we all wanted to head over to the National Signing Day Ceremony at Hoboken High School for two Hoboken High student athletes who were both receiving four-year full-ride scholarships to Division One, to play Division One football. And, yeah, it was awesome. It was really an incredible emotional ceremony for everybody that was there, and these two athletes had been courted by many different universities, but the special thing that they wanted was they had wanted to go together because they'd been playing together since they were six. So they had waited and found the perfect match. So a huge congratulations to Danny Clifford and Josh Mercado on this wonderful honor and accomplishment. For the Performing Arts, the NJ Stan Awards, they were attended on Saturday, January 31st, and 500 students from over 25 high schools in New Jersey compete in six categories. So congratulations to our students for their hard work and dedication, especially taking on this task while also in the show Grease. So Brittany Cologne won fifth place for dramatic monologue, and Eva Lees, Lorenzo, and David Rivera won seventh place for comedic pairs, so congratulations to them. The drama department will participate in another New Jersey thespian competition on March 28th and 29th, and Shrek auditions, which is the district show from K-12, will begin soon. There's a parent meeting, I believe it's a mandatory parent meeting on February 19th, and then the auditions will be on March 2nd, but check the website for the exact details. And then I just wanted to, because Grease was after this meeting, so I don't know if anybody went to see it. It was phenomenal. The kids, there was about 40 students in the show, and front of the house and back of the house, and they utilized the backstage club and the backstage class, and they researched all the props for the 50s era and painted all the sets, built the car. It was, it was an incredible task. It was a huge show and action on many different levels of the auditorium. So I got some numbers, and I wanted to say that there were record crowds over the weekend, especially on Sunday. The line was down the block. It started a few minutes late because people were, we had to open up a third line. And so, let me just, excuse me for a second. Between the ticket sales and the fundraising at the store, they raised about $8,000, so that's very nice for the drama club, too. So I wanted to thank all the kids. I think they did a great job, the cast and crew and Ms. Miller. It was a wonderful show, so try out for Shrek if that's what, you have somebody that's interested, and I think that was it. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gold, finance?
Well, the Finance Committee met, and the agenda items are pretty much pro forma. However, I want to bring attention to the community of two, I think, very important issues. The first, which is really good news, is the Hoboken Public School recently received two awards for 2014-2015 district budget presentation. One from the Association of School Business Officials and International, and others from the Government Finance Office Association. These awards were bestowed upon the district after each organization conducted its own comprehensive review of the submitted budget information. Particular attention was paid to determining how well our prepared budget book serves as a policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and communications device. We were rated very well in all categories and as a recipient of honors from these two prestigious financial association. The, Mr. Moffett, and the Business Department are recognized as both an example of quality budgeting and a model for school districts and government agencies to emulate. The fact is, our budget book is this document, and in a few seconds, I'm going to encourage you all to look at it because you're going to have very good reasons to want to look at it. The Hoboken Board of Education decided upon this rigorous undertaking to increase openness and transparency. The district continues to face budgetary hurdles, and with continued planning and foresight, the district will be better able to position to face financial challenges in the future. So I would encourage interested people to actually reference this adopted budget book, to look at it, to read it, and before you start criticizing the actions we're going to have to take, at least please be forearmed with the facts. In order to do this, please visit our homepage, then click on Budget Information, which is located on the left-hand side of the homepage, and then click on Adopted Budget Book 2014-2015 listed on the page, or just call the business office and they'll tell you how to do it. But in conclusion, I'd like to thank again the business office and Mr. Moffett for pulling all of this information together and getting these two really great awards. So thank you very much. Okay, now, we have a budget book. We have a budget that's transparent. We want to reach out to the community because we don't like paying taxes. So what I want to do now is report on some of the financial issues we are facing with next year's budget. And usually, when you hear the word "issue," that's something that's not good. One, our year-end surplus position will be well below what our expectations were when we created our 2014-2015 budget. With less surplus available at the end of the year, we will have less to use as a revenue source in 2015-2016. The reason for this reduction includes a $670,000 reduction in school choice aid, which was, we were advised of this reduction after our budget was approved. We have a $200,000 increase in charter school payments, and this increase was not made known to us until November 2014. Also, from the state, we can expect flat school aid. The state of New Jersey continues to struggle with providing school districts aid consistent with current levels. Hopefully, we will not see our state aid cut at all, and if it is to be reduced, we hope it might not be as dramatic as the one we had last fiscal year, but on the other end, it might be. This year's, number three, this year's increase in our total charter school transfer will be a challenge, and again, in businesses, challenge means problem. Due to some concerns regarding the older charter school expansion into 7th grade, the budget projection may have to be adjusted in the near future. The older decision will have a direct impact on how the district budgets for the estimated 44 older students in question. Four, a preliminary view of the district's demographic study indicates a projected increase in students enrollment of over 100 students in the 2015-2016 school year and an average of 85 new students a year for the next five years. This demographic change will be critical in determining the 2015-2016 district budget and as well as projections in future years. The food deficit will continue to be addressed by the Board. We made significant progress last year, but still have a number of years to go in paying down the accrued amount. We want to continue to reduce the accumulated deficit and continue to make progress towards an operational break-even point if possible, all the while making sure students with, excuse me, financial needs are provided breakfast and lunch. The fact is, we will never be revenue-neutral with the school lunch. We might be in terms of the food service, but there are always expenses, capital expenditures, spoilage, that will make us spend some money on the school district lunch. So it won't be a lot, but the idea that we'll actually be making money on school lunches, I think the best we can hope for is kind of breaking even or maybe losing $10,000, $20,000 a year. So as you can see, there are major challenges that will continue to place tremendous pressures on our tax levy, which is another word for property taxes. In other words, the Board is going to have to make tough decisions regarding our students and regarding our own community. The fact is, we do have to pay for the services that we want. So the fact is, how do we address this? The first thing to do is to capitalize on the great work that Mr. Moffett did and actually look at our school budget and where the money is going and to look at the budget book. I really hope that everybody who's interested, and it should be most members of the Hoboken community, actually looks at the information we have. We might propose later on a town hall meeting about our finances like we did in the past, or if somebody has some suggestions how to address it, we should do it. So what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is, our budget problems will not be a result of not planning for them. They're going to be a result of state aid, school choice cuts, potential charter school increases, and of the services that parents want. And our kids are important, and we might have to pay, we should pay for our kids. The point is, the community should be on board, and I think, again, thanks to the great work that the business office did, we have a place to start. So that's the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. Ms. Stromwell?
Good evening, everyone. Committee met.
Committee met Tuesday, February 3rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the conference room. In attendance was Ms. McGrath, Director of Community and State Relations from Stevens Institute of Technology; Ms. Ruani Raib, Editorial and Project Coordinator, Stevens Institute of Technology; Ms. DiCanto, Mr. Bartlett, Ms. Soboloff, Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Tyroller, and myself. Stevens put together a nice presentation for the committee, which you all get to see next March, or this next board meeting. It was about past collaboration and future collaboration with our school district in Stevens. It was a really interesting and exhilarating discussion about future works together. Currently, we have planned the STEMathon, which is for every Hoboken resident child in the 6th grade. It's going to be at Stevens campus, and there's going to be, from my understanding, little stations set up with kits for the students to complete. And it ranges from Hoboken students to Hoboken charter students and to private school students. So that's going to be something, I think, really worthwhile, that everyone gets to participate. And currently, the SAT MAX program just started, which Stevens is working with our junior, or sophomore juniors and seniors that are taking the SAT. They're getting some excellent help and skills on test preparedness and flashcards. So we're looking forward to that. The staff participated in professional development on the 4th, that's why there was the half, or, no school day, I'm sorry. They had small group seminars, and they were able to do collaboration together, which I think was brand-new for professional development, that the teachers worked together. So I'm really interested to hear how that went. It's always great when you have teachers work together, solve problems, and cross-collaborate with each other. There's a park, there was a park trial on Friday, and I will let Madam President speak on what happened with the park trial. And the New Jersey Model Curriculum Benchmark data was examined, and it's going to provide teachers everyone's strengths and weaknesses, and where their students are, which will in turn help prepare for the park exam. As scary as that is for everyone, it's coming up. It's in March, and our district and our personnel are doing everything in their power to make sure that it's successful for our students and for everyone. I know that's on most people's minds right now. The New Teacher Institute was postponed, that was supposed to be held on Monday, the 2nd, but obviously, we had that snow day, so it's actually going to happen tomorrow. So I'll report back on how that was for the next board meeting. And that was it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, February 4th, from 10:30 till 12 o'clock. In attendance were Dr. Brackel, myself, Mr. Gagliardi, Dr. Hernandez, Mr. Moffett, Ms. Stromwell, Ms. Soboloff, and Ms. Tyroller. Mr. Gagliardi updated the committee on pending legal matters and answered questions from committee members regarding legal issues. One item in particular to note is that on January 16th, the New Jersey Department of Education invited all interested parties to submit any additional documentation they would like the Department of Ed to consider, as it reconsider's Ola's expansion application. The deadline for such submissions was February 2nd. The board sent a submission to the DOE, as did Ola and Rutgers Professor Julia Sass-Rubin. In addition, the committee reviewed all agenda items for governance and personnel, and recommends all for approval by the board tonight. There is one retirement on the agenda, Mr. John Gallow. We thank him for his years of service, and also wish him all the best in his retirement. And that's it for governance.
Okay. Thank you. Tom?
Okay. Okay. I'd just like to make a quick president's report. Just in, as Ms. Soboloff said, I just wanted to congratulate our students, Ms. Miller, the faculty, and the parents that participated in Grease this weekend. It was a wonderful performance, and all of us up here are very proud of this great accomplishment of our kids and our teachers. There is, as Ms. Stromwell talked about in her report, there's a lot of talk about the approaching park testing. It's a lot in the media. We're actually starting in the district on March 2nd, and there have been concerns raised about our preparedness. So we wanted to give everyone an update about what the district has been doing and how we're prepared. The first thing is, everyone should remember that this test is different than the NJASK for one very important reason, that it's a different medium. NJASK was bubble and number-two pencils, and this, of course, is all done on computers. So that's a huge undertaking for all the districts in New Jersey in order to have the technological infrastructure, as well as the in-class technology that's required to take the test. Our technology department's been working very hard over the past few months preparing. Our full tech team was involved in a park springfield test last year in March and April, so we were able to begin preparations almost a year ago. Connors-Wallace and the high school were all part of this test, and we're in, to ensure Calabro has the same advantage, the texts that were in the test are also assigned to Calabro. Every school has enough testing devices. Students have been using these devices at least once a week for familiarity. And of course, we all know, our kids are very familiar and very fast to learn mouse and computers. So I think we're in good shape as far as our kids being able to work on the technology. District-wide schedule has already been created to manage the number of students taking the test at one time. And just to give you an idea, the maximum students in our district that will be taking the test at once is 280 students. We've been running infrastructure trials to ensure that the network and the devices are sufficient and configured properly. As to tutoring, we've been tutoring in all our buildings. We've added staff where needed to accommodate all students that wish to participate. And it's important to remember that park tests are testing on the common core, and our curriculum is the common core. So when we talk about park tutoring, we're really talking about tutoring what kids are doing in class. So it's not a separate event that's disconnected from their classwork. You know, it's not teaching to the test. What the test measures is what we're already teaching our children in the classroom. So we just got through, on Friday, February 6th, there was a district-wide official infrastructure trial in various grade levels. It went well. There were some issues that were encountered, but they are, had to do with error messages and such, and they're all things that are being handled. So as a district, I think we're in very good, good shape, and parents should be confident that when their child comes up for, to their test, that everything will be in place for them to be able to do their best without having any technical glitches. So I just wanted to have everybody be assured that we're on top of that. And that's all as far as my report goes. And now we'll just, any questions from the board regarding the superintendent, the business administrator, or any of the committee reports? I'll start from this end. Any, Mr., Ms. Stromwell, Jen, Tom? Peter?
Just, just briefly. The budget, from what I remember last year, doesn't need to be approved until April, May now?
Right. And it's a good thing that we start talking about it now.
But I'm just curious, it's not next month like it was in the past?
No.
Okay.
But if we start talking about it now, the community and the board should be able to come up with a mutual understanding of the issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
Yes. Okay. I just want to reiterate what Irene had said about the play Grease. It was absolutely uplifting. The talent was incredible, the voices were wonderful, the colors, the energy. I was so proud to see that, the play, so proud of the high school and our wonderful Ms. Miller. So thank you for a fantastic presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Soboloff?
Yes. Hello? Oh, sorry. Two things. One, I wanted, I wanted to comment on Peter's presentation. I know that we've been talking about the lighting and the sound in the high school for a while, and I went to the shows on, this weekend, and the sound was actually quite improved. We had received a donation from Grease Church of a soundboard last year, so I think that really helped in the sound. I mean, of course, things can be tweaked, but, and then Ruthie and I have reached out to a contact that we have up at Stevens to work on the lighting. So maybe between that and we can reduce the district funding for that. We can, so maybe I'll send you an email, and we can figure out the contacts and that we can. And then Ms. Evans had mentioned the submittals to the DOE, and I know that I get a lot of questions about this, I think a lot of the board members do. So I think that there is some confusion in the community about the different submittals that we've made in regarding this expansion. So I just kind of wanted to just really quickly explain that in the first impact statement that we sent out, we were sent, the district was essentially requesting that the DOE follow their, adhere to their existing rules, not only considering the financial impacts, but also demographics and things that the state calls academic factors, which defined by them are children with special needs, English language learners, and children impacted by poverty. And that's usually measured by children eligible for free and reduced lunch. So we then filed an appeal when it was clear that those things weren't, that analysis wasn't done in the original approval. So the commissioner seemed to agree with us. He remanded it back to his office, to the DOE, for a relook at it, for reconsideration. So on February 2nd, which is what Ms. Evans had mentioned, was an invitation to both districts to supply any, either new information or supplemental information that would help the DOE in making the determination. So in our case, we supplied information from our previous application, our impact statement, and then some links to case law, and some new numbers that we received on the October, it's called the October dates, they do account of Hoboken residents in October. And so for an example, under the academic factor impacted by poverty, the Ola's economically disadvantaged population was 8.2 compared to the district's 60%. And we all know that the impacts of poverty have on educational and academic development, as well as financial resources. So in our February 2nd, we asked the DOE to consider that and to help the community with a more balanced school system, because this system is currently not working. So our packet included those things. Ola's packet was a little bit more anecdotal. I would say it had letters from parents, and it had links to websites and web articles. And so what surprised me when I read, read it, and we've all read it, was that there were links to web news sites with, once again, these articles bashing the district, specifically the high school. And it upset me, and it surprised me that they would, it only just hurts, I don't understand why they were included in that kind of a document, because no matter what the DOE decides, this constant and continuous bashing of this school district only hurts the children. And especially upsetting to me was that sitting on the Ola board are two people that used to, previously were connected to this district. Frank Raya, who used to sit here, and Dr. Anthony Petrasino, a former employee who had sued the district and lost, and they are both founders of Ola and now sit on their board. And I don't know why they included those kinds of things in their packet, but I would hope that the community of Hoboken and the DOE would see that those website articles are nothing more than scandalous headlines to get page hits, and it doesn't matter who they hurt and who they destroy in the meantime. So I hope that the community can see that that's what they are, and I hope, I don't believe personally, in my opinion, that they belonged in an official application to a board like, a body like the DOE. And I think that this bashing of the district has to stop. I don't think it furthers the discussion in any way between us and all the parties concerned. So I just wanted to bring that up, because I think there's some confusion about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to also just make a note that Ms. Evans mentioned it, that there was an unsolicited submission from a Rutgers academic about, it really is a study of what she has, you know, she's an academic, she's done some research on the situation, and it actually is not specifically talking about just this case. It's talking about the charter movement generally on public school districts and what's happening. And that's really a lot of what this is about. It's about, not about the individual schools, it's about looking at the state policy and the state laws and regulations regarding this. Is the state following them? And even if they are following them, is it creating a fair and equitable system? So that's what her paper is about, and it's very interesting to read her opinion. Okay. So now, with that, we'll move on to agenda comments from the public.
Good evening. Pat Waiters, 1233 Park Avenue. Agenda items slash committee items and reports, I just edited all my agenda items. Thank you, Dr. Hernandez. Never in history, you could do your research, any one of you new board members, old board members, never in history, no one stood at this microphone and recognized African-American History Month. You actually also went into detail what programs and what schools are going to be entertaining African-American History Month. I want you to know how special that is to me, the children that I advocate for in this community, to just be recognized. And for you standing here tonight, I know that took a lot of courage, but I want to thank you, and I mean, we are, we all should be treated equally as part of the public school system. And that is great to see that Collabora, Brand, Connors-Wallace, and Hoboken High School, I will be attending all the events, and I'm encouraging everybody that's watching this to attend, too. Thank you. Dr. Brockle, Brockle, am I saying your name right, or can I just, Dr. Brockle? All right. I just want to thank you, too, also. I picked up this magazine when I came in tonight. I know you're just an acting intern, but I'm hoping and praying, and other people too, we in your corner. I mean, I came here Tuesday night to see that they was in closed session, and the last time they had a superintendent search, they made it open to the public. I'm not saying that wasn't transparent, but it wasn't transparent enough for me, because I didn't even know. I did come in here late, they was already in closed session, and on the agenda, it said a superintendent search, or pre-search, or whatever it was, but I didn't see you in attendance, and I'm hoping that you're going to be one of the considerees in this search, because we don't need to keep changing administration. You got your feet warm, you in the door, and I'm reading your statement in this book, so you have lots of experience, I see, and you've been seeing what's going on so far in our school system. And if you're still willing to work with us and the parents, I hope you do be one of the candidates. You know, I just want that said tonight. The volunteer position. You said about January is Board of Ed recognition, and it's a volunteer position. We all know that, but in Hoboken, I mean, you knew here in the area, it's a little more than volunteer position, it's political and power. I'm going to keep it real with you, I don't stand at this microphone and be phony. So it is good that they volunteer their services, but when you're working with the community and the public, I give coodles when coodles is due. Okay? So with that being said, I will recognize it as, everything else they recognize here, like this state one, too, with the guy, Mr. Markle, being presented state award. This is good news, too, but I don't care if people get offended, or negative things happen in the school system, and I can't address it with this board, and I have to go to a state level, too. It won't be a good idea to see my story on the front page. It is bad or good. Just like you all went out of your way to recognize him, and you want to recognize this board for doing such a wonderful job, things is not being addressed, and it's impacting us as a all-government body, all of public schools as one. I want to take that to the state, too, and let it be on here, too. So it ain't all peaches and cream, and when they get offended with whoever's statistics, if our kids is interacting and being impacted physically in these schools, there's no such research or whatever, we talking about what we experience. Okay? And that goes the same, Ms. Soboloff's comment about what you read about the financial packet, and free and reduced lunch kids, and poverty versus whatever. I sit here, and I take offense to that, because lately in this school system, it's now a discrimination against economics. Let me give you a perfect example. My son and a few other kids are actually being disciplined because we can't afford computer services. computer services. Everything out of your mouth is go on the internet, reposting it here and there, not taking into consideration that everyone cannot afford internet services. Now lately in this district, I understand the robo calls and all of that other stuff, simple packets, simple paper. I'm trying to tell you, it's not fair. A lot of mothers ain't even coming out no more, they get discouraged. But to discipline my child because he can't do the computer work and then to tell him go to a library, a public library that we sharing with a lot of people in the public and get 30 minutes, that's disadvantages from him versus the average kid that can go home and kick their shoes off with Buzz Bunny on their computer. Okay? So I want you to look into that too. And then please for me, I'm available anytime. I'm hearing all these committee reports, but these committee meetings should be open to the public. I want to start attending because I want to work with you board, this whole board as a government body to address this issue right away. Because I've been saying this for two years and it seem like you're not taking me serious about the economical restraint on these free and reduced lunch students in this city? It's too obvious and it's clear. And I'm going to show you some comments from the public that they sent with me tonight with flyers where their kids is actually being excluded out because everything is a fear. Now in closing, with the play, I applaud Ms. Miller too also with the play, but it's a mandated, when Ms. Soboloff said about the mandated auditions, my daughter been in every play when Ms. O'House was here. I could truly say she do draft up a paper and I have it with me again tonight, asking people to join the play. But it's kind of disturbance when mothers come to me and tell me their kids go out and audition. And when the play come, we see the same kids in the play, okay? And the same kids is being selected. Whether you call it fair and open and transparent, we impacting it like I said again. Okay? So if these kids are going out and applying theyself and not being in a play, what you should tell her, why don't she consider doing a diverse play? Okay? Even a manuscript or anything for African American History Month. I enjoy Grease too, but February 1st started African American History Month. Ms. O'House was here, we seen diverse on that stage. Not one African American.
That's not true.
Okay? We seen diverse. Irene, I'm not going to go back and forth with you. I talked to the guy myself, he's great friends with my daughter. I'm not going back and forth with you. Because your son get a lead part all the time and in every script. So let it go. So if I was you on a professional level, refrain from even commenting on that, especially that your son has been in every play. Okay? So fair is fair.
Ms. Waiters, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. I'm closing it out.
No, your time is up now, Ms. Waiters.
All right, ma'am. I'm closing it out. You do it all the time, Ms. President.
You can continue during public comment. Your five minutes is up.
All right. But listen, this is not a war between me and you, so you can try all you want, but you're not going to silence me.
Please take your seats.
I will finish on the public comment.
You can finish during the public comment.
I will finish on the public comment.
Thank you very much.
I just went not to your liking, I'm not going to fire you down.
Thank you very much.
No, you're not welcome.
Thank you.
I have six questions and I will limit them to the agenda items and the reports that were just filed. Number one, and four of these are going to be kind of hard and two of these are going to be kind of easy. So number one, the question is, is park mandatory for my child to take or any child in the district to take? Does every child have to take it? What if we choose to opt out?
Well, wait. Mr. Murray, ask all your questions and then we'll do it. That would be great. Thank you.
So basically, is that a DOE rule? Is a BOE rule? And what are the ramifications of that? You can answer that after I'm done with all of my questions, if you feel. Second, I'd like to know what the cost or the budget that we've spent on the legal for this fight with OLA to date. Third, pertaining to Mr. Gold's report, the charter expansion of OLA is 44 students per year report, which, correct me if I'm wrong, is roughly a half million dollars in the budget come next year, in a $64 million budget next year. Okay? So less than 1% of the budget. Good. And fourthly, since we are on budget slash agenda items, agenda item 9.07. Is it my understanding, given our budget issues, that we have agreed to pay people $36.52 an hour to count lunches? Because that's what this seems like it is. It's a lunch audit and you're going to sit in there and make sure they get the food that was actual student count lunches. So we're paying $36.52 to have people count lunches and yet we're coming into a season where, as per Mr. Gold, we're going to have some real decisions to make about money. So not sure where that's going, but okay. Now the two easy ones. Number five is the $75,000 on sound and lighting. I'm so glad to hear that it's going to be less than that. Grease, it sounds like raised 8,000, which would be maybe a tenth of that cost of getting some new sound and lighting. My question is, have we done any community outreach? Have we worked to find any corporate partnerships? Especially the district-wide play that's held every spring includes an awful lot of families that are involved in that. And it would seem like there would be some serious ability to do some fundraising to pay for most, if not all, of that needed money. And then the last piece is, here we go back to the budget again and we're talking about $900,000 for a new football field. I guess my question would be, do we need it this year? And it's like a car, you know, when you're struggling with your budget and you have a used car, can you get another year out of your car? Can you get another couple of years out of your car? Can you repair it? And then on the flip side, what are we doing to generate additional revenues on that surface? I mean, are we looking to raise the fees that we would charge a third-party provider, you know, a sports league or something like that? You know, there aren't very many fields in Hoboken and, you know, what's the market, what's the real market rate that we can pay down some of the debt on the $900,000 for the field? Those would be my questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, is there a next speaker, Mr. Moffett?
That was the last speaker.
That's the last speaker? We'll now have administration and board trustee comments on the public agenda comments. Dr. Brockle?
Brian, it's on or not, but anyway, park is a DOE requirement. The state of New Jersey, along with a lot of other states, signed on to that, along with the Common Core. And there is no opt-out provision in the regulations that control parks. So it's expected that all students, grades three up, will be participating in park.
I don't think the board hasn't taken a position on that though and we're going to go with that, right?
Well, since it's a Department of Education position, I would imagine that that would be a controlling decision.
And I'm not taking a stand. And there actually is a lot of debate in the communities about the validity of the Common Core. There is a lot of debate about the validity of park. And I'm an extreme coward when it comes to addressing that now. But what I want to do is acknowledge your question because it is certainly a question that is on the minds of many parents. So I just want to say that we're not oblivious to that as an issue.
Board members, any comments down this side? Board members, any comments on this side? Sharon? Peter?
Yes. Mr. Murray, you spoke about partnerships with sounding and lighting and I'll certainly bring that to Mr. Caligie's attention. And if you have any ideas, you could certainly send that to me and I'll be sure to bring it up to the committee and then to the whole board. In terms of the football field, you're saying, was it a necessity? I did say in my report that the most you can get out of a field is 10 years. And I also said that Mr. Caligie was looking at possibly bonding this to pay it off over time since, like I said, the annual facilities budget is less than actually what it costs to replace the field completely. So, but in terms of partnerships or that too, we will certainly look into that. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Soboloff, any comments?
Also, one more thing.
Go ahead.
Our concern about the grade is not just financial, but if you give the seventh grade, that's 44. You give the eighth, that's another 44. So eventually, in two years period, it becomes 88, which is close to a million dollars. So it does become an expense. And the problem with that expense, it's not a one-shot deal. It continues over and over and over again. So that's where the budgetary issues with the expansion of any charter school would come up against.
Thank you. Dr. Gold.
Yes. I hesitate because I'm not interested in getting into an argument or a back and forth, but I don't want to leave it hanging out there because I feel like I would need to defend Ms. Miller. Anybody who saw the play, and certainly if you look at Facebook, you could see there most certainly were African Americans in the play. There were, I think, children of every possible background and ethnicity and grade from seven to 12. And it was amazing to watch them, they'd become a family. I only heard of, I think, one or two children that auditioned that didn't get a part. I think usually there's parts for many children, especially in the district show, there's probably 120 students in that show. So I would encourage everybody to come out. Yes, it is a mandated audition. You can't get in the play if you don't audition and you have to sign a contract to that effect that you will be at all the practices. But I just did not want to leave it hanging out there that there were not a diverse student body in that play because there certainly was. And incredible, and there's even some pictures in this newsletter. So I just wanted to say.
Thank you. And I just have a few comments. One, I think we are having closed-session board meetings in regard to interviews for a permanent superintendent. As you know, Dr. Brockle is an interim superintendent. He is a, he has 45 years in education and he's actually retired. So that's why he's an interim. We actually are not allowed to keep him for an extended period of time because of his, he would lose his status as retired. So, but we are certainly enjoying having him here in his tenure. It's been great for our district. But we are having closed-session board meetings. They're committees of the whole, so they are publicly, you know, advertised, but they're closed because we're, it's a personnel issue. We're interviewing candidates. And right now, these candidates would want to keep quiet that they're interviewing because it's, we're at the first round of interviews and they don't necessarily want to alert their current employer that they're searching. So that's why they're closed. So I apologize if there was confusion about that. There was raised about students having issues with internet access. I think that that was probably referring for homework. And I would encourage any parent whose child is having trouble having access to homework to, if they're not getting a solution from their teacher, they should truly go to their building principal and have a discussion with the building principal to find a solution that's accommodating for the child and for the family. You know, if, yes, going to the library would require a parent to be home in the evening to take them, you know, but I'm sure everyone, that the building principal would be able to help you, a parent, find a solution for that. You can meet with them, you can call them on the telephone, and I'm sure that they would be available and would be more than accommodating to figure out a solution to that. Because certainly, we want every child to be able to do their schoolwork and to feel included and to feel the same. And that's really the most important thing, is that all children, no matter what walk of life they're from, that they feel equal and the same in their classroom. The, we often talk about the quoted prices and salaries, hourly rates in the agenda. And I think it's important to note that our employees are in unions. We have three unions here. One encompasses our administrators, you know, our principals and such. We have the teachers' union, which is the teachers, I believe, the clerks, and I think just the teachers and the clerks, and the bus driver. And then we also have the other union, which is our custodial employees, and I think there's another group in there too, and maintenance. So these hourly rates that we see are dictated by that contract. And when we do have contract negotiations, both the board and the union come to the table with wish lists and what they would want. And it is a negotiation. And the board has been very committed to negotiating these contracts with student education and educational time and how much, that that has been the emphasis. And we also are aware of rates, but these are fixed rates. And when people are staying after their normal work hours to do excess work, such as this audit, which is not counting lunches, it's a bookkeeping audit, we need to pay them. And even in a tough budget year, you have to pay people. So I just wanted to point that out.
I just wanted to make a comment to that. It's for up to $290, not to exceed $292. I don't want people thinking that the clerks are getting an extra $75,000 a year to count lunches.
No, it's a limit, you know, there's a limit because we have an expectation of the time.
It's for a couple of hours, right?
And it's the overtime rate because they're going beyond their regular workday. And again, these are things that we're bound to, that we work on every three years. So that was all, I just wanted to point out those things. And now we can move on to board trustee comments on agenda items themselves. So would anyone like to comment on the agenda? Any items on the agenda?
No.
Mr. Biancomano?
Yeah. Just a comment and a question. 9.18, the approval of the new district logo and color change to red and white. I would just like to say, I think the new logo looks absolutely great. I really do. It's certainly an updated, just basically just changed its colors from the old logo. And actually, a little bit of a fun fact, the old logo was actually created by the late freeholder Maurice Fitzgibbons. And I know he would be proud of that his contribution to this district is still going strong, just in a different color. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
No problem. And then a question regarding 10.07. Mr. Moffett? The approval of contracts. There were three contracts to the Mount Vernon Group totaling $129,000. And to me, it seems that the only thing they're doing is preparing or creating or preparing the district to go out for bid. When I was looking at the three contracts, I know one was regarding the facade at that Brand School, the other one was regarding the flood mitigation down at Connor School, and the third was about the generator at Wallace School. And I was just, I always thought in the past that our offices prepares the bids without having to pay an outside company for doing so. Since it is nearly $130,000, I was just wondering, is this normal?
Yes, it's normal. They actually do a lot more work that you don't see. They continually adjust the documentation that you see, which is standardized within the architectural community. But any type of question that pops up with the Department of Education to review, either at Department of Ed or any SDA, district staff and our architectural firm will respond to that. So if we had to make any adjustments, we submit drawings, respond to subcode officials, requirements, they'll help do that. Again, they work in conjunction with district staff. But as far as preparing bids, those are standard bids and they've handled that historically here. And like, I'll reiterate, it's much, much more than just a document you see. It's all the submittals behind it.
And you don't believe that without paying $130,000 to an outside entity, that we could be doing this in-house?
No, I wouldn't recommend it because as being skilled professionals, they obviously would know how to answer certain questions according to what the needs of that profession would be, as opposed to some of our staff, which would include me. I'm not an expert as far as, you know, I have no education in architectural background. I wasn't educated in that field. School business administration, yes. Architectural drawings, no. So I would recommend to the board that we continue to do that.
And just so the public knows, $70,000 of the $130,000, I believe, is regarding the Brand facade, which we are going to get reimbursed from the School Development Authority since it was in the year.
We're going to continue to pursue the full reimbursement for the cost of that scaffolding.
Okay. And again, in the past, this And again, in the past, this was common procedure, where you hired an outside company just to prepare bids and do a lot more architectural work than, say, a school business administrator would do, correct?
If I get your question again, you're kind of repackaging it.
I was just making sure this is the normal procedure.
Yeah, to answer your question, yes, it is a normal procedure.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, I was just going to say that this is typical for government agencies. It's basically like a buyer's rep to make sure we get the best deal, so we don't end up losing money on the end hiring a bad firm. So I know the library and the city both have the same setup, so.
All right, and right. And again, the reason why I asked the question was because in the backup, it did seem like they were just preparing the district to go out to bid, and I thought that it was an exorbitant amount of money just to prepare us for bid, when I thought somebody could probably do that in-house. But since, as Mr. Moffett said, he's not an architect, and neither am I, we should hire a professional service company to go forward.
You could end up making a million-dollar mistake, you know, if you don't put something in the bid.
And I totally understand.
Okay.
No further questions.
Thank you. The right side, any questions on agenda?
I just wanted to make one comment on 10.15. It's just the, I think we do this every month, we approve the volunteers, so I wanted to thank them, Ray Maldonado and John Quinones, for their time volunteering with students.
Thank you. Left side, any agenda comments? No? Okay, so I guess we can have a motion for consent agenda?
Can I move the consent agenda?
What about the live item?
Well, we do like to note at this stage that we're pulling one item, if I can reiterate, and then we're going to enter a live item, which I can read at this moment.
Oh, thank you.
All right, we'll be adding Resolution 9.23, which is Field Trip. The destination is to the University of Pennsylvania for the spring track team, and it's for the Penn Relays. It should, I should say, six students are participating, a total of eight individuals, which include two teachers or coaches. The date is April 23 through April 25. Time of departure, obviously, from the district is around 12 o'clock, the time return is 6:00. Transportation is to be provided by the Board of Ed, and insurance certificate will be required. Total estimated cost is $2,600, with $1,900 coming and being financed by the athletic budget, and the rest will be raised by fundraising activities within, for the students. Any other questions on this agenda item?
Any questions on the live item about the Penn Relays?
Nope, just congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations to our students that qualified. And it's a, it's a great opportunity for these children, because they're, you know, they get to go to University of Pennsylvania, they see a wonderful college campus. I think they actually, there's some trips to some other schools in Philadelphia, I believe they did as well last time.
They mix and interact at night.
Yeah, and they meet other kids from other places. They meet a lot of excellent athletes. It's a, it's really a nice honor. We did it two years ago, I guess?
No, it was more than that.
Two or three years, three years ago? And it's nice that we have some kids that qualified again. Terrific. Okay.
So I have a motion for Mr. Cuffell to move the consent agenda, pulling item number 9.16 and adding item 9.23, seconded by Dr. Gold. Call for, call roll. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancomano?
No on 6.01, 6.02, 6.03, and 6.04. That's.
Okay, that was pretty quick, if you could, 6.01.
6.01, 6.02, 6.03, and 6.04. It's all the minutes.
It's all the minutes.
And again, I've mentioned this in the past, and I've been consistently voting against minutes, and it's for the reason, I do believe that they need to be more thorough. I do, I do think that public comments and board comments are not thorough enough on there. I mean, there's an example where in the minutes in January, I thought that, I mentioned about services from another board member that sat up here for 12 years, and it wasn't even mentioned in those minutes. So that's why I keep continuing voting no on those minutes, and yes on everything else.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes, I have to abstain on 603, 604, and a point of clarification, I believe, the entire board meetings are on board docs, right?
Correct, the tapes are on board docs.
And then yes for everything else.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolow?
Yes, but abstain on any of the closed sessions that I had accused myself of. I can't remember which one it was.
Ms. Stromwell?
Yes, on everything, but abstain on 6.04. I was there.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes.
But I apologize, Mr. Cuffell. Mr. Cuffell?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we will move on to public open comments.
First speaker is Patricia Waiters.
All right, real brief, one minute. Patricia Waiters, I'm not going to use my minute, I'm going to use my own time. Deshona, are you on the phone? This is my student, Deshona Williams, the president of the African-American Culture Club in the high school. Deshona, are you on the phone?
Yes.
All right, you had a discussion with the young man that was the singer, that was the only African-American in the play. You said to me, and I sat there with you, everybody in the black was just stage movers, am I right?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good night. Mommy will be home in a minute. All right, with that being said, I'm not going to stand here and go back and forth with you, Irene. Be the bigger person that's abstaining, okay? And for you, Ms. President, okay?
You do not address the board.
Listen, I'm addressing all of you as a body, but you, Ms. President, just for the record, rule number one, the manner in which the public may speak, do not try to silence me, okay? I'm not having it no more. Every time we talk to you, you don't have that energy. The manner in where I can speak, do not try to gag on me.
Ms. Waiters, I'm not trying to gag you.
All right, well, be quiet, don't waste my time. Don't waste my time, respect me, you'll get to say.
I'm asking you to speak in a respectful manner, which means don't holler.
When Irene's off and your little highlights go back and forth, you don't sit down.
Do not yell. Nobody can understand you when you yell. I'm not yelling.
Mind your business.
I'm speaking.
Now you respect me, and you'll get to say.
Just please, I am respecting you, but I need you to speak in a calm manner.
Mr., don't tell me how to speak. This is the public portion, and again, here go the rules, okay? Thank you. So I'm trying to tell you now, stop running for the board, because the truth hurts. When I stand up here and share with you what we are experiencing in this skin, and you get offended, it's showing, your true colors show. Because I said that right away, you cut me off and tried to silence me. Now, with that being said, this is from all students that go to the school, okay? When Irene sit there and try to paint this pretty picture, and I get stuff like this, and you're going to tell me that what my kid could do, and we could talk to the principal, it's not just impacting me. These are the kids from Housing Authority, Free and Reduced Lunch. We got flyers here where every little program, they're being charged for it, and it's supposed to be an all-public school system? On this flyer, PTO is representing the party, with only Wallace School only, okay? I'm getting sick and tired of the Brown versus Board of Ed tactics in this school. I'm going to ask you again, because I'm not using my five minutes on that. I need you, as the president, to meet with me, okay? Whatever, I'm going to make myself available. So we rectify this ongoing segregation, okay? And financial restraints is being the new one, okay? It is a burden on us, and I don't want it to be ignored, because I don't want to go to the state and bring the media in on this. Because what you just showed tonight, I'm glad people watching it displayed it, all right? Now, don't question me like she quit to defend Ms. Miller. We quit to defend Ms. O'Hast, when over 300 students showed up, from Say Say and all of them, my daughter, and them was always in every play. So I don't want to make it a battle back and forth, so when you jump in to defend Ms. Sobolow, consider my students and the people that go to this school system before you get offended. With that being said, my little son brought this home, okay? And he said to me, mommy, just like he just talked about opting out, did I have to sit there and watch this Holocaust survivor? Okay, now I want answers from my kids when they come home, not shut them up like you just tried to do me. This is, I'm telling you, when February 1st came, our kids expect to see a speaker come in too, and get treated the same, okay? This is all I'm saying to you, and be recognized like Dr. Hernandez did tonight. We know races can be a very emotional issue, but when our kids is really seeing it, and it's impacting them in the school system physically, don't sit here and try to paint a pretty picture for the public, okay? Because I will have them out here, representing on behalf of us. It got to stop. Now, here go a guest speaker. I'm inviting all of you to the annual Black Youth Empowerment. We got a guest speaker there, Senator Ronald Rice, powerful man, educated, black speaker, okay? So don't tell me neither one of y'all tried to reach out and get a speaker like you got for this event on December the 1st. It's disheartening, and it's not fair, and it's showing segregation, okay? But as a body, I'm talking to all of you now, please, reach out and support my community for African-American History Month, okay? Please, that's all I'm asking you. When I mentioned the play, at least she is the play director. Only thing I'm saying, it would have been nice, even if she put a little few kids on the stage and gave a script of the opening for African-American History Month. I got two minutes, I'm timing myself, Mr. Cuffell. Here go my watch right here, okay? And all of these flyers saying the same thing, the bullying issues, I went to this hearing too, with Ms. Rodriguez, please, these issues got to be addressed. Whenever you ready, Dr. President, please contact me. Here go my business card, and I need to address these matters with the whole board. If I got to put it in writing like I did with Mr. Gold, and he denied it when he made his white right flight issue, I'm putting it in writing like another lady did, and you honored her, because I came to that meeting, okay? You brought out the whole board, and he wasn't the president then, but she was honored. I'm going to put it in writing, I'm going to make it formal. I need to meet with this board at once, because this is very serious, all right? This ain't made up. This is serious what our kids is impacting, and I'm going to show you evidence of the effects, okay? If I have to bring the occasion and the other doll like the Brown versus Board of Ed with Earl Good Marshall, I'll do it, because that's where we at at this point in Hoboken. And the shows with the charter school issues. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Moffett?
Hi. Brian Murray, 1100 Maxwell Lane. I am sorry that the agenda item that was added at the end, I did not get a chance to comment on. I do think it's a great thing that our kids can participate in the Penn Relays. I am scratching my head as to why it costs $1,900 from the district and another 700 from the kids that they raise to send eight people to Philadelphia, which is 90 miles away. I just think that there's got to be a better way than putting them on a BOE bus at, you know, weekend rates and sending them there, and that, you know, maybe they can get in a carpool, or they can figure out a different way of doing it that doesn't cost the kids $700 and the district $1,900. I mean, it's over $200 a person to go to Philadelphia. They could get a hotel room there for that kind of a price.
They're going to be at a hotel.
They're three days, the 23rd to the 25th.
I apologize.
Sorry, and I apologize for not bringing that in before.
I thought they were coming and going the same day.
No, 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 they're not coming back and forth.
Then, good on you.
Okay. And I apologize, we didn't, we did that out of order. I recognize that.
I didn't get any explanations to what that was. So have fun and go crazy. Just a point, you guys do negotiate the budgets with the unions, all of the unions. So when there is a lot, an agenda item that seems excessive, it does come back on you. It's not a trade-off, it's a line item. It's a line item. And then, you know, I first got involved with the Board of Ed when I felt I came up here and got some not-so-truthful answers. And then when I hear, you know, I come up and talk about this, and it's not about counting student lunches, yet it says right in the description, verify actual student count lunches, I get confused. And when they say it's overtime, and then here it says, approve to perform the audit during their regularly scheduled lunchtime, I get confused. So, you know, am I getting the right answers here, or am I not? Or is this just a misprint in the paper here? I was very disturbed this evening about a board member calling out members of the public that aren't here to defend themselves. Whether I like those people or don't like those people, whether you like those people or don't like those people, but when you specifically mention people who are not, you know, political figures that, you know, while they might be somewhat, but they're not specifically political figures, that, you know, when you're talking to them about a non-political issue, I just, I hope that I'm not sitting at home one day, having missed a meeting, hearing my name being called by board members in, you know, a less than nice way. And then I also want to address, because I did miss, I did miss last meeting and the meeting before, because I knew I would be away. But I come back from vacation, the Christmas vacation, I was on vacation, and I read in the paper this thing about the board and the board special counsel directing this board to not, to tell the DOE not to allow the charter school to open up their recruitment this year to minorities, like they wanted to do to try to address some of the concerns that this board had. And now, you can say that it's the bigger picture, and that, you know, we're doing this because we want to, we want to win this lawsuit, but at the end of the day, you're making, you're voting individually about people's lives. So essentially, what you've done to some minority families that might have been able to choose that charter school is say, no, you're just, you know, you're just another statistic as part of the machine because we've decided it's for the greater good. And, you know, that really, on a personal level, you have to look yourself in the mirror and say that, to that family, and that you're not getting the path that you want in education because it's for the greater good. And lastly, I just want to point out with the park, because my kids are going to take the park, because, you know, it's a test and they're in school, and that's what it is. But it really does seem like almost a throwback to the 1950s, or a big government kind of telling the, you know, the population what to do and how to do it. And that's kind of scary to me, because I know there are a lot of kids and a lot of families that are very concerned about the park, and what it means, and what it means to their future, and it concerns me that some of the board members here have used the words like scary for the park, that teachers use the words, it's difficult, it's hard. So what is that message, going back to the students? Are they really preparing for this and saying, this is going to be something that's going to be challenging, but we're going to get through? Or is it, it's hard and it's scary? And when, you know, the kids are eight, nine, 10 years old, they look to leaders for the cues and the signals, and to how they're going to approach this. And I just want to caution everyone to say, hey, maybe we're really not, we might not feel that it's the greatest thing, but what we project to our children, it might not be the greatest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett?
Next speaker is Sarah Raynor.
Hi, I'm Sarah Raynor. My daughter Hannah is a freshman at Hoboken High School, and she was Frenchy. I wanted to first, I was coming up here to say something else, but I feel like I also need to address some comments. I wanted to give a shout out to Willie Allen, who was Teen Angel in the play, Grease. I thought he did a fantastic job. Isaiah Watson, who worked backstage, Amanda Hitches, Skylar Reeler, Malcolm Cummins, all of these students today, fantastic job, as did Ms. Miller on the show Grease. Ms. Pick sent out a letter to every parent this week at Hoboken Junior and Senior High, just announcing that the PTO at the high school is going to be forming officially a board of directors, I guess. So I just wanted to make that publicly, I just wanted to say that publicly, that on February 18th, which is next Wednesday at 6:30, we're having a PTO meeting, and we will be having elections. So any interested parent from 7th all the way through 12th grade, I would encourage to come and show your support, and let's create this board, this PTO board. I'm really excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last speaker is Roseanne Versace.
Good evening, Roseanne Versace, 4th grade teacher, Wallace School. I just wanted to make some comments on a few comments that were made. The Hoboken Education Association, for the second year in a row, is sponsoring a Black History Month essay contest, and it's open to all students in grades 4 through 12. And we have three separate categories, and actually, two separate questions that, essay questions that the students are encouraged to write an essay about and then submit. There will be three separate prizes also. So the categories are 4th grade through 6th grade, 7th through 8th grade, and 9th through 12. And the theme of this year, since this is the 50th anniversary of the Voting Act, Voting Act, right, Voting Rights Act, sorry, is from Selma to the Voting Rights Act. The information was disseminated to all the teachers, and we're hoping that we have, you know, a good turnout as far as students participating in it. So anybody listening or watching on the rebroadcast of this, I would encourage you to have your students participate in the essay contest. Secondly, I just wanted to... Secondly, I just wanted to thank Dr. Brackel and the Board of Ed publication for celebrating Mark Mottone as the New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. I think he deserved to be on the cover. I think he deserved to have a special feature in the magazine. It is not every day or not maybe ever in the history of most districts. As Dr. Brackel said in his statement on the first page, that a school has that honor, and we are so honored. We were honored when he was Hoboken Teacher of the Year. We were honored when he was the county, and then to be honored by the state is really something very special. We celebrate him as a teacher in Hoboken, and I celebrate him as a colleague at Wallace School. So I think that everybody should be proud of that, and frankly, I don't think maybe the city or... I don't think it's been necessarily publicized enough and really celebrated enough to have this really esteemed colleague and great honor. I mean, he's become not just an advocate for the district, but he is also basically touring the state and has gone out of state as well, promoting his level of education, promoting special ed, promoting his work with the ABA students, and working with autism and all the innovations that he has created to help these students. And I really think that it is a truly great honor for this district and for the city of Hoboken, and I wish more people would acknowledge that. And my last comment is just, Mr. Murray mentioned about park, and I just wanted to sort of, at least from my perspective, just to kind of allay any concerns or fears that while we don't want to give a misrepresentation about the test because this is the first time that a test like this is being taken, and the students, in my grade level, for example, they've only taken NJAS once, so they're not seasoned standardized test takers. But we are trying to communicate it in the most positive way possible. We're trying to quell any fears that they have and basically say, look, this is, you know, you're going to be taking it on a computer, which is different. It's a different type of test, but you need to do the best you can, and you need to not be so worried about it. I mean, that's the message that we're trying to convey to the students. Will there be anxiety? Yes, there's anxiety. I have anxiety every time I gave the NJAS because, I mean, it's a different form of testing. Everything is so documented and stringent, but at the same time, we don't want the children to get over anxious over everything. It's a test like any other. They've been practicing on the Chromebooks, and I have no doubt that they'll do the best they can, and I have no doubt that my colleagues are doing everything possible to make them as prepared as possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett? Is that the last speaker?
That is.
Okay. So now we'll have administration and board trustee comments on the public portion. Any comments from Bill?
Mr. Moffett?
Mr. Moffett, with regards to Brian Murray's about the lunch audit, I know some committee members, we brought this up to you in committee session. Could you please give him the explanation you gave us when we questioned?
Sure. We, some time ago, as a board, had identified and restructured our food service delivery. We went from our own operation to a private operation. When we did that, we needed to do certain things centrally. So part of that is processing of school lunch applications, which these individuals are involved in. And the auditing piece, like Ms. Ty Roller mentioned, it's more of an accounting side of it. It's actually going out and conducting a double check on counts, that what is recorded in our system is accurate. So that is what they're conducting here tonight, and it is required to be provided by central.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Murray understood it wasn't just, it was actually so students could obtain free and reduced lunch for the district, which went above and beyond the normal operating hours, so that each child would not go to school without food in their stomach.
Any other comments? Ms. Evans?
I did, I did. I spoke about this at our last meeting, but I do want to talk about it again since it seems like perhaps there is still a perception that the board is responsible for Ola's weighted lottery proposal to have not been implemented, or that we're in fact against a weighted lottery. So just to, you know, go over that again, because I do feel that it's a very unfair representation, in addition, completely inaccurate. The timing of events is that Ola sent its letter requesting a weighted lottery to the Department of Education on December 23rd. And they requested an answer from the Department of Ed on this matter by December 31st. So again, a very aggressive timeline with Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, and a weekend during that week, during which they wanted, you know, an assessment and an answer on that. To my understanding, the Department of Ed never responded to that letter, and to date has not. We, the board, I believe Dr. Brackel, received the letter from Ola on January 5th after their requested deadline. So no matter what our opinion, there's no way that we could have done anything because we didn't even know about the existence of the letter until after Ola's deadline. Our attorney did write a letter on January 7th requesting that the Department of Ed consider the petition first because the awaited lottery would be falling under that, what I would call an umbrella, because what the petition is seeking is assistance, as other board members said tonight, with a system that isn't working. The board has no opposition to a weighted lottery or to a universal opt-out application. But again, we feel that, you know, this is falling under the petition, and we requested that the Department of Ed make a decision on that as a more appropriate way to do that. So again, I just wanted to say that because I do feel it's an unfair representation of the board and inaccurate. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the accurate representation of events was given again. All right, and then the lottery occurred on January 9th. So, you know, that was two days after we sent our letter. So the timeline was very tight.
Any other comments from this side? Comments?
Can I congratulate? I just want to congratulate the cast and crew of Grease. It was a fabulous show, really terrific. And I want to congratulate our two seniors heading to Wagner next year.
Mr. Bianca Maddox?
I would just briefly, like, just to comment, this Ola litigation that's going on is certainly a divisive issue in this city. And I know tonight, Mr. Murray touched upon, a member of the board bringing up two members of the public who are not here to defend themselves. And I just want to remind everybody that there is the First Amendment out there where people are entitled to their freedom of speech. And, you know, obviously, people are so emotional about this, and I can see why Ms. Sobolow, you would be emotional about it, and I'm emotional about it as well. And I sometimes like to put myself in the shoes of other people, and just to see what they're looking at as well. So there is, it's such a divisive issue that, you know, I tend not to bring it up during public meetings because it is that. And, but, and obviously, there are strong opinions out there, and there will continue to be strong opinions, so. And that's about it. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
I have just like three things to say. First of all, the play will be broadcast on Channel 77, and I think everyone would really enjoy it. There's a lot of talent, and there's a lot of diversity, and I think you will see for yourselves the diversity in the play. Absolutely wonderful, wonderful show. I also want to congratulate the Boys and Girls Swim Team. They won, they matched both, the boys team and the girls team won their meets, so shout out to them. And also to Daniel Clifford and Josh Mercado for having their full scholarships to Staten Island. A big congratulations to their parents and to those two young men. Thank you.
Yes. I wanted to say briefly that I absolutely, absolutely agree with Mr. Murray. I would never, I've been on that side of the podium, I've been on this side of the podium, and I would never want this to be a place where people, parents can't come. And in fact, sometimes, to the disagreement of some on my board, maybe I speak too much. I think it's nice to be informational. I think when I came here, I liked to answer some questions. I would never want to, you know, make somebody uncomfortable at the podium. But what I was referencing were articles and things out in the public domain that speak about the children, and they can't defend themselves either. So I feel that it's my job as a board member, when those pieces of misinformation floating around like fact, excuse me. So I feel it's my job to kind of at least bring my opinion to that and to make people aware of that. Now, Mr. Raya and Mr. Petrosino are not little children, they are board members. And they must also then be responsible for the things that are submitted in their name, in their application to the DOE. And that's exactly what I was saying, was that I didn't understand why, in a sort of a factual, numbers-based application, that they would include things that were some sort of web news-based articles that I believe are false, and that I was trying, and that they paint the students in such a horrible light, and then I was defending the students. So I think Mr. Raya and Petrosino, they can defend themselves. I will do my job and defend the students. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so in closing, I just want to, Ms. Raynor pointed out that everyone who is a junior or senior high school parent probably got the letter in the mail. I did, because I am the parent of a 7th grader. And so we are putting together, Ms. Pick sent out the letter, an official PTO, and so we're having what are officer elections. So the letter basically said, if you're interested, I believe you are contacting the main office to submit your name, and the date of the meeting where there'll be, I guess, a vote is February 18th in the evening. I would guess 7 o'clock? 8? 6:30? Okay. So I just wanted to thank you for mentioning it at the podium. I just wanted to reinforce that. And I do understand how people are sensitive about people saying names, but I do have to agree that when you're on a board in this town, whether it's the board, this board, the zoning board, the city council, or a charter school board, you put yourself in a position where your opinion and your actions can be commented on, especially when they have to do with the business at hand. Well, they should really only be about the business at hand, school business. And the references in that letter were to Dr. Anthony Petrosino's blog, and in which, and he is a board member of Ola, and he is very, says some very untrue things about our district and puts it in a very bad light in a twisted way. So I think in that instance, it's different than if it were about just a regular person sitting before us who comes and is not on a board. But I do also want to mention that there was a question about Ola legal fees, and we have not gone beyond the $50,000 that we had already allocated. And that was out there, and I just wanted to say that we're still within those limits. And with that, can I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.